They were the first ones out of the hat and did a great job in reflecting, I think, a substantial amount of important information and data about where we are. And I know there will be more in the future as we collect baseline information and continue to report out on these metrics and other metrics that we decide to add into the future. You'll remember Susan, I thought, was very cute when she said, "I won't present it again." So, we have no intention of actually walking through the report again. We have the report and the presentation on the screen should you have specific questions that we need to reference back to. But this is your opportunity to ask us any questions that you might have about the actual report. So, Susan?
One thing I do want to add is we did add some additional information to board docs this morning and specifically to premier workforce. We did add the workforce diversity by subgroup that Mr. Moon had requested last Thursday evening. So, if you need to refresh your board docs, all the documents should be attached. And we did attach some additional documents related to class size, but we'll talk about that maybe separate from some of the items related to premier workforce.
So, Ms. Quinn, how would you like us to proceed? Do you want to go through a section and then ask if there are questions or comments? Or what do you want from the board?
I think it might be easier to segment the questions around anything in the report, but the class size questions may be separate, so we're not going back and forth. So, any questions not related to class size, let's start with that. Is that a good way to approach this?
Sure. We could start with some questions that have been forwarded to us over the weekend, maybe, then. I know there were some questions on slides nine and 10, and they had to do with the recruitment strategies that we will be using this coming year and how we're going to expand some of the efforts. And actually, it's not slides nine and 10. That's narrative report pages nine and 10. The slides are slide 14 and slide 17. No, sorry. Slide 15 and slide 17. So, the first slide on recruitment strategies, I'm going to actually turn it over to Susan Marks and have her kind of talk a little bit about which of those strategies that are new for this coming year and which ones are the ones that we're actually expanding and being more intentional about what we're doing.
Good morning. Many of these strategies have been used before, but we are becoming much more intentional about them in terms of really looking at the data that we are getting from all these recruitment activities. We do a lot of recruitment activities, but who are we bringing back to the district? What is the process to get them onboarded early? So, in the past, you have done early contracting, and that is a great strategy. In fact, it's probably the best strategy. We have to even go earlier. And so, we're looking at December graduates right at the moment. We're looking at ways that we can expand our pool in terms of diversity and in terms of hard-to-fill vacancies. In terms of focusing in on our student teachers, we've sort of thought that they had a great experience here, but we're really going to be much more intentional and engaging our principals in terms of who are the best? Who do we want to nurture and keep warm? We are expanding our partnerships. We are looking, we are expanding partnerships with GMU around ESOL and early childhood special ed. We have a partnership with Howard that is looking at training instructional assistants to become teachers. And we hope, we have two people in that right now, and we hope to expand that in the future. And in terms of engaging students who may have not gone into education, I think one of the scary pieces of data that was in the narrative is that 30%, we've lost about 30% of our students who are going into education. They're not going into education as much. And so, we have to engage students who may not be going into education to enter into education. And this is done in a couple of ways. One is we are talking with Teach for America about a possible partnership that would be really helpful, particularly in identifying teachers for high-need schools. And that's in the initial stages. And also, the idea of growing your own teachers. Because we are all competing for the same pool, and the pool is dwindling, we really need to look at growing our own. And how do we do that? We do that through our diverse support staff who know our children and are committed to Fairfax. And we do do that by recruiting people who may not be going into education to find that education is just a great career. And that's about career changers. And then, the other thing that we have to do and that we're going to increase is the work with the state in terms of policies. And really, looking at what are the barriers that the state is putting up that doesn't allow us to get people who could be great teachers? I often say that Leonard Bernstein couldn't become a music teacher because of some of our policies. And so, we have to work with the state to identify our needs and use the data relative to our positions that we've been able to fill or not fill. And look at the ways that we make sure that we have high standards and high-quality teachers, but that we can support teachers as they are getting their certification. So, I think it's a redoubling of many, many great strategies that you've used. And one of the other things is about using technology in a more focused way. So, providing principals with tools, easy access to resumes and online applicants. And we're excited about working with an organization that will be able to provide us with Skype interviews of teachers so our principals can access that actually at their desks.
One of the other things I wanted to add on the early contracts, currently, we do offer early contracts. What we don't do is on-the-spot early contracts when we're on recruitment trips. That's one of the things that we heard back from my principals, that when they're on these trips, some of the other districts, two tables down, are able to offer those contracts right on the spot. So, we lose that opportunity right up front. So, that's some of the things that we're looking at and how to do differently.
Okay, I have Mr. Velkoff.
So, I do have a couple of thoughts that are driven by this chart here. And of course, you might, you're probably not surprised that bolt number 2.3 here is of interest to me, recruiting non-education majors, particularly in science, math, and computer science. You know, one of the things we're up against is just pure market economics, right? Market forces. My guess is that, say, someone in computer science to teach probably has to take a 33% to 50% pay cut. And, you know, there's altruism, just as there is actually with school board salaries. There's altruism, but then there's also, you've got to pay your bills. And it's just not, for many people, it's just not financially an option. So, I think we have to kind of get creative about that. I was trying to think, you know, could employers, could we ask tech companies, for instance, to maybe, and I don't know what this does to the school systems, I'm just throwing an idea, but would tech companies be able to pool some resources that could essentially subsidize people in the sciences that go beyond what the school system itself could offer? I have no idea what that would mean, okay? But that's a real issue. I know, Dr. Garzi, you saw me shaking my head inadvertently when we mentioned Teach for America. Please don't do this. The point is, I mean, the thing that I really dislike about Teach for America is, in my opinion, it's an insult to anyone who goes into education because it says, "You can come in, you can teach for a couple of years, and bye-bye." All right? And, I mean, you would never do that in accounting or computer science. I mean, it's just, it's an insult to educators. I do believe that we want to find a way, again, you want to find people who didn't get an education degree, who are actually really interested in teaching, right? And finding a way to nurture them and incentivize them to stay in teaching, which I don't think is what Teach for America is about. But if we can do that, and there's things like, what can we offer? For instance, loan forgiveness, right? Students are coming out with huge amounts of debt. Is there a way that, I mean, that's one of the incentives, I think, for some of these programs, is that there are ways to help students with their loans and stuff. So, I'm all in favor of trying to find people who haven't come out with an education degree, their history, social, whatever it is, right? But let's make sure that they're investing in the school system and not just going to walk off in two years and having done their thing.
Just, this isn't a debate about TFA today, but I will tell you that there's been some, I think they've improved their practice over time. And I've had a lot of experience with them, so I know exactly how the program's set up. But I do think we're going to have to look at alternative certification programs. We can no longer be in a position that if you don't go through a fully-degreed program, that we're not going to look at you anymore. Those times are gone, particularly since we're looking at, long-term, the national trends, and people going directly into education is slowing dramatically. And so, we do have to look at alternative pathways. And it's more about, still, it's more about hiring the right people. And then, even in TFA, even in all of these other programs, as long as you continue to support them in the right way, if you offer them leadership opportunities, even in a teacher leadership role, you can keep them longer term. I think that goes well beyond some of the, just TFA or some of these alternative models. But I think we're going to have to be more creative in how we get the right talent and the right expertise into our schools.
If I may say, I think that, Dr. Garzi, you bring up a great point. We can actually maybe even do a great job of getting people. It is keeping them. And that's across the board. It's not only in terms of organizations like TNTP or TFA, but it's all teachers. And so, we have to really engage our staff to be great recruiters and great retainers of talent. And that's why one of the things that we really want is to engage our principals and our teachers to help us to connect with their universities, connect with their friends, and say, "Come and work in Fairfax County. It's a great place to work, and there are great opportunities for you." So, recruitment cannot be separate from a retention strategy.
Okay, I have Ms. Evans filed by Mr. Moon.
And that's a perfect segue to what I wanted to raise was the teacher retention rate. And by the way, I do want to, again, thank you so much for this excellent report. It's got great information in it. You know, when I look at page eight of your report, we do great for the first four years of retention. You know, we're doing better than we did in '06, '07. We're higher than we were then, we're higher than the national average. And then, at year five, it looks like we're not doing as well. And then, I don't have the page number, but I did write the notes that apparently 70% of our teachers who leave have seven years or less with us. And I think we have to focus on that. We have to figure out why that is. You know, our year-one retention rate is 94%. That's great. Higher than it was, higher than the national average.
Slide 12.
Sorry?
I apologize. I was telling you what slide that you're referring to. Slide 12.
And so, I do think that going forward, when we look at whether it's compensation or other incentives, we need to be very cognizant of the idea that 70% of the people who are leaving us have seven years or less in the system. So, that's just a point of reference for us. I have high hopes for our compensation study. I hope that that will help guide us in the future. Living wage, I wanted to go down to, we're doing better, let's see, I think that's page, page 12 or 13.
Slide 18.
Oh, slide, okay. I was looking at the narrative, but, okay. We're doing better, and that's great. I sure hope we can do something about those 58 custodians who remain below the living wage. I did have a question. So, with food service workers and transportation attendants, is that telling us that no matter how many hours they work, the issue is that they make less than $13.13 an hour? Okay, so that's why they're below the living wage. Okay, so it's not a matter of they're working part-time, it's that they, it's an hourly rate, okay? So, and the custodians, I'm curious as to why we still have 58? Is that just our newest custodians? Are they part-time? Are they, how is it that they're, is that a small number?
It probably is our newest custodians at the lower end of the salary scale. So, if you probably look at our food service workers and custodians at the very early onset of those salary scales, the hourly rate is below $13.13.
Okay. Do we know how much lower? Like, if...
To address this in total is about 1.5 million.
Oh, okay.
I believe I'm in the ballpark. Am I right, Kristin?
Yes, 1.3 million.
1.3, to address all of these groups of employees and get them to the 13-point.
On average...
$13.13.
Yeah. On average, the custodians are approximately 30 to 40 cents below the $13.13.
So, we're pretty close.
The largest gap is in our food service workers.
Right, okay.
From their hourly rate to the living wage rate.
Okay. And it's, I know they're not up there because they do make more, but, you know, again, just mentioned that I do feel strongly about the parent liaisons. And I do believe that they, even though they make more than $13.13 an hour, I certainly would like to see them brought onto staff and given benefits. I think that that number was something like 2 million to do that. So, I just, I mention that because at least at some point, I would very much like for us to do that.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you. Thanks for providing the board with the more detailed information regarding a workforce diversity, especially teachers. I'm happy to see, you know, from my perspective, a positive trend toward having more diversified teachers, which still have a long way to go. If our goal is, you know, basically wanting to see our teacher workforce or workforce reflecting the diversity of the student population or the community. Having said that, is it possible for you to provide us with, you know, retention data as well?
Staff in the back and...
Okay. Just let us know whether you have that or not. And also, a application pool data?
Yes.
Okay. Whether you could show us some trend, whether we are making a, you know, trend is going toward the positive or not?
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I heard those, because those are action items. The first one, again, to clarify.
It's the retention data, retention.
And the other is...
I'm more focused on the teachers.
Teacher retention data, okay.
And you were talking about by group, is that correct?
By groups, yes.
By group, by group, okay. And then, the other one was trends in the applicant pools.
Applicant pools.
Yes, okay, thank you.
You know, those two have been the issues in the past. I'm sure they are still the issues, whether we have sufficient pool of candidates to become teachers, or we are doing a good enough job of recruiting.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. Heinz.
Thank you. And yes, thank you very much. This is, to my mind, anyway, a big improvement over the OEs, just for me. You know, I think this is better data, the narrative helps me understand it better, and I think it's at the level that we should be talking about. So, thank you very much. I just, I know, I agree, I don't want to debate TFA here today either, but this is the first time I've heard anyone on FCPF staff say that we're pursuing a partnership with TFA. And so, if we're going to do that, I do think that we owe at least our employee organizations an opportunity to weigh in, and maybe the community as a whole. That needs, I think, to be a public conversation. So, thank you for, but answering my question that I sent last night. I had just a couple more. On slide 16, where we talk about, again, diversity trends in the workforce, and, you know, this is the tricky question that we have to ask about this, is, we're measuring, but are we measuring against any sort of goals? Do we have any idea of what our objectives are? Or, you know, are we measuring ourselves against other systems? I mean, or are we just kind of measuring?
Well, we're always looking for the best talent, right? So, I think as our diversity improves to represent our student demographics, I think there is research that shows that there is an increase in student achievement. We are looking at our data compared to the national trends, and I just apologize, because I thought I had pulled some information this morning, but I can't find it. But we were kind of looking at the demographics nationally, demographics within Virginia, and what our demographics are and what our trends are within that diversity. So, while we are improving our diversity trend, again, I think more diversity in the system with the best-talented candidate will improve, I think, our overall work of the school system.
It's difficult to establish definitive metrics in this area, and I would caution the board from doing that right now. I think we do need to be measuring it, we need to be reporting out on it, we need to see positive trends reflecting that we're diversifying our workforce. But I think school systems that have established definitive targets by group got themselves in a bind because you can't have the conversation without also saying, "We're looking for the best qualified." It's a two-part question. And to have either one of those, I think, would lend itself, I think some school systems have gotten themselves into trouble because it gives the people and parents that you have quotas, and that's a challenge.
No, I agree. It is, that is the challenge. But just kind of watching it without having any kind of a thing that we're measuring ourselves against is also worries me. It feels like we're just sort of watching. So, I wonder if we do have national data or data of other large school systems or some way, could I, if we have it available, could I get that?
I could provide you this information. This is some of the data we pulled this morning. Nationally, it's 18%. In state of Virginia, it's 15%. We're currently at 17.4%. And we also wanted to kind of compare that to our student demographics. So, when you look at nationally, I have to do this backwards, 48% is the, 48% diversity nationally, and in Virginia, 46%. But for FCPS, we're 60% diverse.
Can we add that to the report, the actual report? I'm trying not to have, you know, the report and then lots of separate information out here. Anything that I think that's meaningful, that provides the context, which is where you were, I think, what you were trying to accomplish. If we could just add it into the report itself?
Sure.
For the public? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of other quick ones. I hope they're quick. Slide 22 is sort of a similar question, and this is on ratings of performance evaluations for teachers and administrators. Do we have any kind of goals there as well? I mean, are we hoping to achieve more highly, you know, 50% highly effective? I mean, it seems like the goals might be sort of random, but I'm just wondering if we are just measuring or looking for something in particular?
We want, we really would like all our teachers to be highly effective, all our staff to be highly effective, and we're moving towards that. Most importantly is the effectiveness of how we're executing the evaluation system, and are we executing it with fidelity? All staff needs specific feedback to improve their performance. So, absolutely, we're looking at getting as many people as we can in the highly effective. It connects with who we're hiring. We want to hire great people and then support them. And so, there's been a great push on training people on the evaluation tools and using the new system in terms of the online system so it's easier for principals and other staff to do that.
Thank you. And that segues right into my last question, which is about the assessment, well, actually, I'm not sure it does, assessment of professional development. Slide 23, this is something different, actually. I was just wondering, who will be, who will be doing that program evaluation? Are we giving...
It's going to be part of the Office of Professional Evaluation, OPE. We'll be conducting the study, and it's part of their scheduled review of professional development that is in the works for next school year.
Okay, so that'll be an internal review? We will not be getting any outside help? Okay.
Any other board members? Okay, before I go back, anybody else want to have an opportunity? No? Okay, I'll take a turn quickly, and then we'll go back to Ms. Evans. I wanted to focus on slide 13, looking at the critical field areas of vacancies, and talk a little bit about that. I mean, there's a couple in there that peg over 10%. And so, do we have specific strategies in mind? I mean, as I walk away with kind of a handful of nuggets in this report, which is excellent, by the way, this is one that stands out in my mind, particularly special education. You know, what are we doing to address that very important area?
Again, we're really looking to expand our partnerships with universities focusing in on special education. I think there's been lots of movement towards expanding a partnership with GMU on early childhood special education, which is incredibly important. The other thing that we really need to do is focus directly on special ed by having special ed job fairs and other ways of going to universities and saying that we want to engage with your special ed departments. And we want our teachers or our principals or HR to go and talk to students when they're in their junior year about the importance of special ed. One of the issues with special ed is that it's easy to jump to general ed. You take a praxis, and you can jump to special, general ed. And oftentimes, we hire fairly well, but we know that our teachers jump to regular ed when they can because of the demands on special ed teachers. So, we have to look at how we can support them with their paperwork and all the other kinds of things. But it really is making those relationships with those universities and also developing alternative pathways that engage people to go into special education.
I'm going to add to that, too, is a lot of these areas, the early contracts would help us a lot. So, we've been periodically, over the last several years, meeting with principals and saying, "What can we do to make sure that we're getting ahead?" And so, that's why we moved up the hiring process, big improvement. The other thing we're going to have to do is be able to issue contracts at that point when we're with a strong candidate, not waiting. That's key. The third piece that we have to continue to do is advocate with the state around licensure requirements. Some of these areas, the licensure requirements are a major impediment, like ESOL, for example, the world languages. Y'all remember last year, I think it was, or year before, they changed the requirements around world languages, and elementary teachers of world language had to be elementary certified and, which was a major problem for us. So, we need to continue to advocate the state level for much more flexibility with licensure requirements, and that would help a lot in these areas.
Thank you. And finally, then, in areas like special education, where we have 54 vacancies as of October, what's happening in those classrooms? We have long-term subs?
what's happening in those classrooms? We have long-term subs?
Yeah, we're working with the schools to make sure that they do have long-term subs. We also are looking at our sub pool and seeing if there are people in that pool who are close to certification, who we can engage and really support and make sure that they're being effective in the classroom and we can help them get their certification. We also are looking at those staff who may have retired, who might come back and help us or help us part-time to support schools. And one of the most important things is that we provide a consistent adult in that room. And so we're working very, very closely with the regional assistant superintendents as well about any issues that may be coming up and also Dr. Lipp as well.
And I also want to point out on that note, this was as of October the 9th. Some of these have likely been filled. I don't know if it's a full 54. But hopefully, a good number of those have been filled since that time.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. Evans for a go back.
I found the answer to my question. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll turn to the next portion, which is the class size issues. And is there anything you wanted to do to tee up the discussion, Ms. Quinn?
Actually, I would like to invite Kristin Michael to the table to kind of help with this portion of the discussion. And I also wanted to mention that we posted several additional attachments for this particular work session. So what we've included as additional attachments, class sizes by region. We've included class size comparison to last year. We've also provided the staffing reserve usage by school. And then finally, we provided the overview of enrollment growth, cost per pupil, and staffing reserve. So you're going to find four additional attachments related to the class size discussion. So I'm going to go into the second attachment called class size comparison for last year.
So will you provide kind of summary of each one since most of us are just looking at this for the first time?
This one, class size comparison to last year, the very first page is a summary of all the detail that follows. So we grouped it by region, but what you're going to see in the detail is by school. So this kind of summarizes that particular report. And what I wanted to point out on this particular report is the very grand total for grades one through three. There's not a summary for the kindergarten class sizes due to the fact that we didn't really change any class size guidelines for kindergarten from last year. So we did not provide a summary for that grade level. So for grades one through three, you could see that as compared to last year, our current class sizes that are in the upper grouping, classes with 28 to 30 students, we have 64 classes. When you compare that to 140 in last school year, that's a 54% reduction in classes that are ranging in that group, 28 to 30 students.
And some of those will have instructional aid.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Another important.
In addition to all that, we have additional support for those classes. So we've made significant improvements in those large class sizes. And then when you go to grades four through six, same comparison, grand total, we went from 75 classes last school year to 65 classes this school year with class sizes between 31 and 35 students. And that's a reduction of 13%. So this kind of summarizes the work that we've been doing to mitigate the large class sizes. Okay?
Any questions or comments on that before we go to the next, Mrs. Schultz?
So if you take 375, 375 plus 136, that's what you're saying, is the total of classrooms 20 and below for last year?
Correct.
Well, we were given the class size information by actual teacher name. And I'd love to sit down with you in a follow-up discussion because it's 1,078. So I don't know how you come up with.
This does not include kindergarten. This is grades one through six.
So are you saying that there's 500, 600 classrooms of kindergarten that are 20 and under? That doesn't make any sense.
There are, last year, there was 123 classes that were below 20 students.
I know. So where's the other six, five or 600 classes?
I think you were looking at a report, correct me if I'm wrong, that was looking at 17 and below. I think you had it done by 17 or below. Is that correct?
Nope.
But I do, I do think the breakpoint is different. Maybe you had used classes below 20?
Zero, zero special education students or one, no more than one special education student per class. So I'm happy to have this as a follow-up conversation because, you know, when I have the names of the teachers by classroom, that's just a huge disconnect. And so I would request that to be a follow-up. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? We'll move on to the next attachment?
Sure. The very first, like I said, the attachment is class size by region. And you could see, it looks similar to this. And you could see which of the schools are our state K3 schools with the state cap. And you'll see the state cap in the second column of either, the first page shows 22, 23, or 24. But the state cap ranges from 19 through 24. So we provided you the same information multiple ways. That is called elementary class sizes by region.
You just have to keep scrolling down, Mr. Moon. The summary's at the front, and then you keep scrolling down. You'll see the more detailed report.
On the same attachment?
Yes, same attachment, Mr. Moon. And this looks familiar. We've given this to you the last several years by school.
Yeah, actually, I think it is a different document.
I think the document is titled October 15th, ES class sizes.
So elementary class sizes by region is the format that we provided to you last year. Okay? The report that I just went over with the summary chart is by, it's called class size comparison. This is a brand-new report because it compares current year's class sizes to last year's class sizes.
On that same, in that same report, though, so go to that for just a second. Class size comparison. See that? Keep scrolling down. And see, it gives you detail by school.
Right. And the right side of this document should tie to the first report that we provided.
That's correct. It just provides you.
Two years' worth of information on this report. Okay? The third document, staffing reserve usage by school, is a detailed report of how many positions were allocated due to formula or returned to the staffing reserve or based on class size or unique needs. So you could see by school how many positions were allocated or polled from that particular school.
You've never gotten this much information about class size, ever, I don't believe. And it's a lot of information. And we've never discussed it at a work session. So this is also a first. So I know we're hitting some of you cold, but we have it scheduled yet again for the next work, board meeting. And certainly, we could entertain any questions you have. If you don't, haven't had time to really study it, just let us know if you have additional questions.
Okay, I have Ms. Heinz followed by Mrs. Smith. Just on this chart right here, I want to make sure I understand what it's, yeah, this one, that's up there, right there. I want to understand what it's telling me. So for example, Aldrin Elementary, I'm looking at the first, first one, at least on my page one, right? So what does it mean? Teacher two in parentheses, assistant one in parentheses. Does those mean positions they've lost? Because they're in parentheses? Okay.
Correct. Parentheses means negative, right? So that means they've, we polled teachers from Aldrin based on the actual enrollment coming in under the projected amount. So when we rerun the formulas, it shows that they had two additional teacher positions and one additional IA position. So we polled three positions in total due to formula. And then because there were some unique needs or special education requirements, we allocated a teacher.
The other thing you have to understand, I know this gets so complicated, but class size always does. Because it's so nuanced and it's different per school. But when we say pulled a teacher, it doesn't mean we technically always pulled a teacher. They were given their formula in the late spring. We worked through it over the summer. So this could be a position that was vacant. We're just not allowing them to fill. So it's just different in every circumstance. I just want to be careful. It's not as if these were, in some cases, never anyone actually in the position. They were, it's an allocation that was adjusted.
Okay, Mrs. Smith?
I was just going to ask the same question about what this meant, so thank you.
Mrs. Schultz?
So I alluded to this question on Thursday night. With the pulling back out of positions, by pulling them out and reallocating them, that's a budget-neutral position. So if you take a teacher out of, and I don't know, I'm going to guess up here, if you took a teacher out of.
Armstrong is a good example.
Armstrong and put them at Annandale Terrace. Is that, is that like what I'm seeing? The one, there was one added at.
Annandale Terrace, correct.
And one taken away from Armstrong.
Correct.
So that's budget-neutral. So that didn't go into the 318 additional positions that we had allocated for increased student membership.
So I'm going to walk you through, if we don't have questions on the other charts, some of the, how we calculate, it's the very last attachment, how we calculate cost of enrollment and the total positions we added to the system, like you mentioned. And then how we calculate the cost per student and how we use the staffing reserve because they all work together.
Okay, so you want me to hold my question until you do your next part?
Yes.
So I think you're the, what you're going to go to now, Susan, is the attachment entitled Enrollment Growth and Reserve Summary. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect. And now that I have my expert sitting next to me, I'm actually going to have Ms. Michael walk you through this document.
So in the FY16 approved budget, this is a chart from that budget that shows for the cost of enrollment growth, what positions we added. So in FY16, the cost of enrollment growth and student demographic changes was 22.1 million. So what this chart shows you at the top is for general education, broken out by elementary, middle, high, and in total, how many positions were allocated out due to general education enrollment growth. So you can see for general education enrollment growth in total, it was 166.7 positions and 11.3 million. Then we allocated staff out for the new school at Fort Belvoir. We have positions that we allocated, 63.8 positions and 4.9 million for English for speakers of other languages. Then our special education requirements in FY16 approved were 78.8 positions and 4.3 million. And then based on our formulas, we adjusted psychologists and social workers as well as our funding for hourly for substitutes and per pupil allocations, which brings us to that total cost of enrollment growth of 22.1 positions. 22.1 million, thank you, and 318.3 positions. So that's what we allocated out to schools. So when we talk about how do we calculate this cost, I'll walk through that on the next page. But when we're budgeting for expenditures, we don't use a cost-per-pupil methodology. What we do is we calculate the positions that are required based on enrollment growth. And we compare that back to the previous year to calculate how much we spend. So at the top of the next page, we have a chart that used three sample schools. So in this case, for school A, B, and C, I just used kindergarten and grades one through six. And I said, how many students did they have in FY15, the last approved budget? How many teacher positions did those students generate based on our staffing formulas as well as IAs? And IAs are on this chart because we allocated teacher and an instructional assistant to every kindergarten class. So then in the FY16 approved budget, last spring, based on our spring updated enrollment projections, we recalculate how many positions are needed at each school. And that becomes the approved budget for FY16. So for school A, you can see that they require, they had 58 students, and they required three teachers and three IAs. So that increase in four students at that school required us to add one teacher and one IA. Right? And we calculate kindergarten separately because it has that hard cap. So then this example goes through each one of these schools and shows the difference. So in school A for kindergarten, four students generated another teacher and another instructional assistant. Then in grades one through six, they had an overall decrease of 21 students that resulted in them having one fewer teacher. Then you can see for school B in kindergarten, they actually had a decrease of 15 students. But based on that class size formula, it didn't result in any fewer teachers being at that school. Right? In grades one through six, they saw 39 additional students, so they required two more teachers. And we go through this school by school, program by program, for both general ed, ESOL, special education. And we calculate these costs out for the entire system. And then we add them together, and that net number becomes our cost of enrollment growth. So that's exactly how we calculate that.
Just to add, so for this example, if this was all of the schools netted together, the growth in students are 32, we had to add four teacher positions and two IAs. That is your cost of growth.
So then, once we know how many positions we've allocated out, right, we calculate our cost per pupil. So our cost per pupil takes all of the costs of our system, combines them all together, and we use a methodology that was agreed to by WABE jurisdictions. So we actually include costs that are beyond our operating fund. So we have consistent comparable data, for example, grants. And we add all of those costs together, and then we divide them by our number of students to get a cost per student. Now, in the example that we just went through where those 32 positions required us to add six positions, those 32 positions don't impact, 32 students don't impact some of our fixed costs like utilities. So for each of those schools, for example, the cost of utilities remained the same. It didn't go up or down based on that number of students. The same thing applies to some other fixed costs, like a principal, for example. Every school gets one principal. So regardless of the number of students, that, that cost doesn't change. So that's why in this paragraph under cost per pupil, right, you can't just take the number of students where enrollment is going up or down, multiply that by a cost per pupil, and get what we should have saved, right? It's going through the calculation at the top where we went through, where we look at exactly how many teachers are required based on the number of students at each school.
But with that said, there are two things. We will be bringing to the board as we continue to work through this, what are our real costs? And are you getting to that next? Okay, then I'll let you.
So once we use the approved budget and we develop that cost of growth, then any variances that occur between what we projected in terms of the number of students and what we actually have get adjusted through the staffing reserve. Right? So the staffing reserve is a mechanism that we use to address variances between our projected enrollment and our actual enrollment. And again, we do that on a school-by-school basis, right? So at the top of the next page, we use a similar chart to show the example. So in this case, we have what we projected for school A in terms of the enrollment, again, for kindergarten grades one through six, then what their actual enrollment was. Then it shows you that variation in student, and then what we did for the reserve. So looking at school A in kindergarten, for example. So looking at school A in kindergarten, for example, right, this school had 58 students. That's what they were projected for, which allocates out three teachers and three instructional assistants. But their actual enrollment came in at 56 students. And 56 students only generate two teachers and two IAs. So in this case, because they were so close to generating the next teacher, if they actually had one more student, we would have to allocate out a teacher. So in cases where schools enrollment was within five students of generating that teacher, in this case, the school didn't qualify for the teacher and IA by formula, but we allocated them out for expected growth.
The, the reason that five is very important is kind of a rule of thumb that we apply because our schools change all year long. Uh, and the last thing we want to do is pull a teacher out of a school or a position out of a school, then next week, they enroll, you know, several students and they're over. So, you know, we're trying to have almost this, you know, a little bit of a buffer because it so dramatically changes and, you know, it's very upsetting to parents when we change their child's class and then all of a sudden, they're up over, over the number, and then they get the teacher back. So, you know, that's kind of been the buffer, kind of the rule of thumb that we've been, you know, trying to apply.
So to continue to look at this chart, that same school, school A in grades one through six, they were projected to have 323 students, which would generate 12 teachers. While their actual enrollment came in at 336, and based on formula, that still generates 12 teachers. So there you can see an increase in 13 students, based on formula has no impact in terms of the number of teachers. But the school in this example had class sizes that exceeded our guidelines, so we actually allocated two teacher positions out for a class size adjustment. So this chart shows how we use the reserve, both in terms of adjusting for formula, where our enrollment actuals were different from what was projected, that expected growth. So schools that were within those five students of, of growing into either keeping or needing that teacher, and then the class size adjustments that we made based on the class size guidelines.
And that's, that distinction's very important to kind of, for folks to understand is because we have formulas at the division level that drive our budget, drive our staffing decisions. They're formulas. How that translates into specific class size at a school varies from year to year. And that's why our regional offices, our HR department, we have to stay on this all summer long because students don't come to us in these neat packages, uh, you know, 25, you know, at each grade level by each student. So it's different every year. And so that's why that flexibility and our ability to use staffing reserve to address class size is really essential because the formulas don't always translate appropriately.
Okay, thank you. I have Mr. Press, Mr. Velkoff, Mrs. Schultz.
Thank you. Just a quick question on the sheet that we were looking at before that, which was staffing reserve usage by school. I was going through here and, you know, I was looking at it cold, so I, you know, I couldn't compare it to see if there was a school missing, but is, but is it standard, not, not, I shouldn't say standard, but normal for us to, um, have every school having a staffing reserve delta? Is every school represented on this list? And if so, um, you know, is that, is that something that we've been seeing for multiple years now?
Thank you for the question. So when we look at middle and high schools, we always adjust their staffing based on their actual enrollment. So whether they come in either over or under that projected enrollment, we will always adjust middle and high schools. When you look at elementary, they will only be on this list if they had an adjustment. So if a school didn't need an adjustment due to formula, class size, or special education, they would not appear on this list.
This is not every school in the county. There are, there are schools that just had zero net.
I believe so.
Mr. Velkoff.
So, um, let me ask. We have about 200 school campuses, and these apply to those approximately 200 schools. Can you tell me what percentage approximately of the entire budget gets generated by the formulas that, that apply to these schools? Just, you know, rough figure.
Sure, it's going to be nearly all of our budget because our allocations to schools, both in terms of staffing and allocations for items like textbooks, hourly funding is all done on a per-student basis. Right? So with the exception of larger things like bus fuel or utilities, it would be nearly all of our budget.
Right, so there's an understa- let's, we have an understanding that, of course, when we allocate a teacher, let's say, or custodian, that their, uh, health insurance, their retirement benefits are part of the cost that goes into the school, as, as the way this is being, uh, put out there. So am I wrong to think that maybe it's 90%?
No, you're probably correct. We have about just under 90% of our budget is positions, compensation, so salaries and benefits. And then when you look at our total positions, 93% are in schools.
Right, okay. So, wh- when I was a PTA treasurer and a PTSA president, you know, we typically did budgets by looking at what we spent last year. We had it, you know, line by line. And then we would go through it by each category and say, okay, well, let's, we think we're going to add 100 here, or 1,000 there, whatever, right? That's clearly not a zero-based budget. You're just kind of taking today's budget and kind of tweaking it. But it doesn't sound to me like that's what we do here, right? Because what we do is we have fundamentals, there's information that we analyze every single year, and then based on formulas that were approved by the school board, we grind out these numbers, which is to say, actually, we do zero-based budgeting.
I think the other challenge we have for helping people understand how this works is it's always based upon projections, right? So every year when we build a budget, uh, starting in January, February, and March, we're looking at our experience from the current year to then adjust and make decisions for the next year's budget, even though it still is a projection. And we experienced this to significant degree with our changing ESOL population last year. Remember in February, we had to adjust that number based on the number of Level 1 students that we had. Yet we started the school year and it's still based upon a projection. So we have to continually update the board and the public and update our experience and our numbers as we move forward. Uh, and I think we'll get some more into this in our next conversation, if it's the next one, um, after lunch, is, you know, we are seeing a slowing of our growth. Um, and so down the road, while 21 million for growth of membership is a combination of membership and demographics, it's those two combined. But 20, what was the number again, 20?
22.1.
22.1 is the lowest we've had, and because we keep lowering that number. Um, and I think in January, when I present the budget again, I think you're going to see a, a lower number for membership growth than what we'd originally projected just because we're watching our compression of growth. And ultimately, I think we'll be able to adjust moving forward.
Okay, I have Mrs. Schultz.
So, um, on the previous table where you had the, um, parenthetical 1.0, 2.0 positions, back and forth, do we just have a list of where the 40 teachers for the larger class size? Where did they go? Just a list of schools.
That would be this, this reserve allocation. All the ones that were allocated to address class size are in the column called Class Size.
I'm, well, that's, I'm, that's why I'm saying, is there just a list?
Yes, there is. So it's on, it's the document called Staffing Reserve Usage.
Okay.
And if you'll look, it shows a difference between what was formula-based, right? Is that the right one?
That, that is the correct one, and there's a column called Class Size.
And those would be the ones that would have come from.
Okay, but is there, okay-
So they didn't, they didn't get it by formula?
And not a table and just a narrative format, is what I'm asking. Is there just like, you know, in a text format? Because for some people, navigating a table like this may be difficult for them. I'm just trying to, for the, the-
We have the, we have the summary of how, by budget. It was in the first report. I'll show you. Let me see if that, um, answers your question.
Okay, well, we don't have to wait for you to look.
Okay.
That, you can just let me-
We can modify the report and just get you the list of schools.
Just the li- yeah, you know, that, that makes it, you know, for, you know, all audiences. It makes it, I think, a little bit easier. Two is, um, I'm still going back to, uh, a, a projection that wound up being 2,115 students less. And at, whether we use the WABE guide number, and, um, Ms. Michael, you were kind enough to explain, but I think that we need to do a better job documenting in our, um, in our own documents, like which pools of money are being attributed. Because, for example, um, in our own, in our own documents, we have, um, we had a third quarter review that showed the per pupil cost, um, actuals, um, at $17,086 a student, um, with the projection for this year to be $14,417. And in a similar document at the same time, the WABE document was $13,519. So, and I know that some include food and some don't include food. If we can enumerate in the documents which number we're talking about because people see 13.5 and 14.4 and 17.086, and they don't know which number is right. But let's just say roughly, you know, 14,000 per, um, if, i- i- if that's the case, then how did we, basically, we're saying that we spent 28.5 to $33 million when we have 2,000 fewer students. And I think that's the dialogue that becomes incredibly difficult as a policymaker to navigate publicly, is to say, well, it's in the, it's in the way we do the calculations. That's, that frankly, just, it doesn't work out well enough for us in the public discourse with the board supervisors. Now, maybe that's going to start to change here and, and the immediate, you know, in the immediate near future, maybe there'll be a greater degree of education that goes on as a result of that. But I still have a problem understanding how we absorbed $30 million worth of staffing in increases of staffing and new positions when we wind up having over 2,000 fewer students. And we say that we had already provided for bringing down the cost of, um, or the, bringing down class size for some of those, with those 40 positions.
Okay, I think the answer to that question, um, first of all, what we're trying to illustrate is you can't just do a, a simple mathematics equation and know what the net savings will be. That we do have to look at it school by school by school. We're not suggesting that there won't be some savings that we're going to be able to, uh, capture because our growth has been mitigated. That, I think that's potentially a possibility. We're still calculating, um, you know, special ed staffing, and some of that occurs until January, February. Typically, we've brought to the board in January, I think it's January when we typically do it, the mid, uh, mid-year budget. And, and there's a difference between how we're developing fiscal year 17 budget and how we execute our current budget. And we typically bring to the board in January a report on how we're doing on the current year budget. And we'll, we'll factor in and acknowledge savings that we had not anticipated at that time. For an example, in last year, we, um, acknowledged some savings that we were experiencing in, in health insurance. You all remember, because of people's changing behavior on which, uh, which plans they were selecting. We reflected that, and the board then got to determine, uh, how that, if that just set aside till year end. You know, so we show our work. And so we, year before that, we weren't using as many positions in staffing reserve as we'd anticipated. So we turned 14 of those, I think it was, back to the board. So as we move further along, to your point, Ms. Schultz, if we, if we see that in terms of real numbers, that we will not need as much of our budget this year because of the growth, we will show that, uh, in this year's, um-
You understand the point that I'm trying to make is at the 30,000-foot level, we had, what was it, 318.7 positions or something in our, in our budget that we were calculating we would need for student enrollment growth. And if we wind up with over 2,100 fewer students, and a lot of the quote-unquote, um, uh, uh, with the new policy, the redistribution of, of teachers is taking teachers out where population didn't show up that we thought, and redeploying them, that's budget neutral because we didn't fire that teacher from a school where they didn't have enough students. We took that teacher and put that teacher someplace else. So that's one of the positions that's already below that threshold of the additional 318 positions. But what we're saying is, not only did we do that, did we pull back some staffing where the, the, the student population didn't show up that we thought was going to show up. So we saved some there because we moved those teachers to where the population did appear, but that we went ahead and used the money of the additional 318 positions. And that's the part that I'm having a reconciliation problem with because it's, it's kind of, it's kind of fundamental that that's $30 million worth of staffing that we apparently deployed. And it ties into, if we're headed into the fall and some CIP conversations in the community around, um, how are, how we plan for where students come from. And the continual need to refine, not at a division level, not at a region level, not even at a pyramid level, but at a school level. And we've talked about, and I was looking to see if, um, uh, anybody from facilities was still left in the room, those heat maps of population, where population's coming and where population isn't coming. Because then that helps tie this all together. But I still, you know, I, I'm going to have to go through this in detail to understand where $30 million worth of staffing went when we don't have 2,000, over 2,100 students.
We're going to talk about enrollment per school, and Ms. Schultz is correct in saying that we've been trying to refine our methodology so we do a better job at the school level. So you'll start to see some of that in one of our conversations today. But I think we need to be careful about saying the 30 million as if that's a correct number because that's not a correct number. That, again, applies a, you know, the difference in what we think the enrollment is times a cer- uh, 13,000, whatever, average cost, $13,572. And then that's becomes a, a number. That's actually not an accurate number a- a- at all. So I think we have to be careful with that. Kristin?
So, so of the cost of enrollment growth, which was the 22.1 million, when we look at what portion of that was growth in total number of students versus what portion was student demographics, right, the change in enrollment numbers is 11.3 million approximately of that total because the remaining portion is coming from special ed and ESOL. So that's the chart on page one of this attachment that will separate out what parts enrollment in total, and then what part is ESOL and special education.
Are you, when you say ESOL, are you saying that all the, in, all the costs to educate an ESOL student are captured outside of the 11 million?
So the additional funding that we needed to allocate for ESOL based on our changing student demographics is shown on this chart. This chart compares the requirements for FY16 as compared to FY15. So any changes in enrollment or student demographics that resulted in costs, whether they're positive or negative, would be on this chart.
No, but my question is, is that, that, is that just the delta above what it takes to educate another s- like, i- is that the total cu- total cost of educating the ESOL students who came in? Or is that just the ESOL portion of educating an ESOL student?
This chart takes the number of positions that were required in FY16 and compares them back to the number of positions that were required in FY15. And any change from FY15's approved budget to FY16 approved budget is in this chart. So this shows, based on the change in our population in terms of ESOL students from FY15 to FY16, how many additional positions and what that cost is comparing 15 to 16.
So essentially, the answer to your question, Kristin, y'all listen to me, make sure I get this right, is yes. It's the difference that's on top of because of additional staffing that are required to respond to the students' need, the specialized programming that they need.
So, so this line just shows that incremental ESOL teacher cost. It doesn't show the general education portion on the ESOL line. It doesn't show the general education portion on the ESOL line.
Right, so the 21 million is not an inclusive number. That's exactly my point.
I'm not understanding.
The 21 million doesn't take into account all of the other costs? That takes into account just what's on that chart.
This takes into account any cost increases that resulted due to changes in our total enrollment or demographics. It's a comparison from the prior year.
We recalculate everything this year based on number of students and the demographics within each school. And then we did the same thing last year, and all we're saying is the difference of those two calculations is this chart.
I don't want, I don't want to boil the ocean over 7.5 million dollars. I started with 28.5 million. I said 28.5 million was the figure that I was working with from my head from this calculation. What this comprehensively includes or doesn't include, 28.5 million, 21 million. You know, a million here, a million there, sooner or later, you're talking real money. I'm still talking about 318.3 positions deployed and $21 million worth of positions, whether it's 299 positions or 350 positions, I don't really care. That's $21 million that you're saying is deployed when we have 2,115 fewer students.
So then we went through every individual school and calculated what their actual enrollment would generate in terms of staffing as compared to what we projected. And any school that was allocated more staffing based on their projection than they qualified for, we adjusted, and they're on this reserve report in the formula column.
And that's precisely my point, and that I've spent five years talking about projections. And the numbers from May to September were off by $21 million, basically.
Okay.
Because we have over 2,000 fewer stu-
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to take control of this meeting now and say that much of this discussion about the projections will be discussed in our 2:00 PM facilities discussion. So maybe we could revisit, yeah, they're related, so some of these, some of these questions and issues may be addressed then. And if not, maybe after that facilities discussion, we can identify specific actions or questions for further deliberation. But I want to move us on right now. And I have Ms. Evans, Ms. Hines, Mr. Moon, and then I'm reminding my colleagues that we're going into closed, closed session for lunch before our 2 o'clock.
Thank you. I want to say, first of all, thank you for the detail in this report. I think there's a lot in there. Of course, it means there's a lot to absorb for things that we're just seeing now. I, I do think we need another conversation about it, because there's, I, I'm going to need more time to actually go through in detail. My quick look at this, one of the things that I have to say gives me great concern is that some of the biggest hits appear to be at some of our poorest schools. That's, that's my first takeaway from the information.
What do you mean by hits?
Well, for example, in the staffing reserve, Stewart High School lost five teachers. If you go to page 10, Staffing Reserve Usage-
Correct, and that's because their enrollment came in lower than projected.
Right.
So as part of this process of then going back and recalculating what staffing should be allocated based on the actual students that are there, right? They did then return five positions to the reserve because their enrollment was below projections.
At the same time, Stewart is a high school that sees a big influx of students in the spring. We know that that is a school that is an unusual school. They start registering students in the spring. What do we do then, when we get a big influx in the spring, as we typically do? Do we then add from the staffing reserve?
So, depending on the time of the year, we do continue to allocate positions from the reserve. I think the chart we have on the screen right now is where the staffing reserve is as of October. So we still have approximately 92 positions available and $9 million available in the staffing reserve. So we will continue to monitor each school, and if needs arise, we can continue to allocate positions from the staffing reserve. What we don't use at the end of the day will go into your ending balance, or it'll fall out at the end of the year, or if we need to recognize it earlier, it'll happen either at mid-year review or third-quarter budget review.
And I do want to look and see what, I, I know there was a lower projection. I don't think it was that much lower, but I'll have to take a look, because that's, that's what I wanted to review. I would have expected it because of the ESOL pilot there for us, or was that already, that was separate?
That's separate.
All right, so that, that then makes a little bit more sense, if we already had, had that allocated separately. And I, I will say, though, there are some schools and where, where I'm seeing their class size go up pretty significantly at some of our schools with the highest percent of free and reduced lunch. And that's another thing I'm going to be taking a closer look at, because if we're looking, one of our, one of the things we're looking at later in the day is where, where we're going to find money in our, in our budget. And if some of our lowest-income schools have taken hits already, which it appears, again, from a quick look, that some of them have, I would be very reluctant to do anything more.
Now, just to be clear, just for anyone that might be listening, the schools that Ms. Evans is, is referring to are not because we changed anything on our budget. It, it's the way the numbers translate, is one thing. And the second thing we did change is if a school did not meet their stand, their enrollment projection, because of this angst we have, we're trying to make our budget work, we've had to say, if you don't meet your number within the first 10 days of school, we have to pull positions out. So those are the two, I think, factors that I think are important to, to note.
That, I understand that point, but in, if, when we're looking at class size, the documents that we have here on those that are under 20 and 20 to 28, there are some that, that last year had more classes on the lower end and now have more classes on the higher end. That's what I'm looking at. But I need to look at this more thoroughly before I ask a, a reasonable question about it, because this is my, you know, first glance at it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. This is a lot of detail, thank you. And it's always a challenge to put enough detail, but then to talk about it in a way people understand. And I think we all probably do need some more time. My question, I just want to see if I can find it in this information, which is, what do we have left for large classes? For example, I mean, some of these schools that struggle with large classes will continue to need extra help as their class sizes bump over the cap. And so what's left in here? How are we going to deal with that?
So the slide that's up on the screen shows the staffing reserve balances of October. So you can see how many positions were returned to the schools, actual enrollment being below projection, and then also how many positions were allocated out to schools when their enrollment came in above. When you look at the positions allocated to address class size requirements, we've currently allocated out 107.5 positions, spending $6.46 million, which is more than we had budgeted originally to address large class size. But after you account for all of those, we do still have 92.14 positions in the reserve, so we'll continue to monitor class size and make adjustments.
Okay, and if we continue to see large class sizes, we will go back into the balance in the staffing reserve to address and mitigate those large class sizes.
Okay, so even though we last year tried to set aside a specific amount of money to address large class sizes, we have the caps. They're real, the caps and triggers, so we have to go into the staffing reserve to, okay, thank you. Mr. Moon?
Thank you for the presentation. It's a, it's really for the school board to have this kind of detailed information. In my, sixteen-year-long service, this is the first time, and it's very well done. Because, you know, on the campaign trail, also, when you have a conversation with just the members in public and members on the board of supervisors, it converses and can, a lot of times, become too simplistic. It's difficult to explain how we come to certain numbers unless we go through all these charts. And a lot of times, most of, most of the time, we do not have the time to go through all these in this, this kind of detail. And I hope that, you know, we have an opportunity with, especially with the members on the board of supervisors, show all these attachments, all these charts, and for them to be, well, we have a, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Thor, be able to help them out and, and make some presentations at your own meetings in the future. Having said that, I just want to go to, this is the last page of Staffing Reserve Usage, the numbers down there, a grand total. I see somewhere close to 190 and 200 positions at the bottom altogether. 22.37, 107.50, and 61, that's about 190 positions. Whether these changes will also trigger any non-instructional position changes, i.e. administrators, support staff, custodians?
We don't adjust any of the support positions based on what was included in the approved budget. So if a school came in and their, and actual enrollment was different, either above or below, we don't adjust clerical, custodial, any of those support positions.
So in that case, if a, if a school over-projected enrollment, and based upon their over-projection, they had additional non-instructional staffing, and then when we add, to the actual counting of the students in September, or for the special education, it's not going to be until December time frame, then reduce the number of staffing, but they still kept their over-projected based non-instructional staffing? But if they do it the reverse way, they under-projected, and then the, the enrollment comes in a higher number, or they get many more, you know, instructional staffing, which should have triggered, under normal situation, more staffing, but you don't make that adjustment.
Correct. We don't make that adjustment.
Does that give, does that give hypothetically a, a school's incentive to over-project them?
No, because the projections are done centrally. What I would say is, by not adjusting those positions, it helps with stability. So principals have the ability to plan, and so we're not moving people after school starts, right? And sometimes schools will have slightly more staff than they should have, but other times they'll have less.
Those projections are all done centrally, so there is no local incentive. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Very good. I'll ask Ms. Mulberg to call up our next steps, and while she's doing that, I want to acknowledge another school board member-elect, Tom Wilson, in the room. Okay, next steps, provide teacher retention data by group, including any trends in the applicant pools.
On, on that one is if we can. We're not certain, remember, we'll have to look, I believe our staff indicated, we're not certain if we have that by group, but if we do, we'll, we'll provide it. Thank you.
And the next one is to add the context regarding diversity of applicants nationally and statewide. And the last, clarify number of kindergarten classrooms and class size comparison report. Is that-
I'm, I'm not sure about that, because we, we don't provide that. That's not included within the class size reports. So I'm not sure, was there a board member that asked for some clarification on that one?
No, so that, that really was a clarification of the classroom distribution, because I'm sitting, I'm looking at it on my screen right now, and 3,065 classrooms.
Okay, we're going to talk about that, we're going to talk about that later. Hold that, hold that thought. Okay, so any other next steps to be added? Very good. All right, thank you.
So that last one needs, needs to come off, Aline.
Yeah, just take it right off. Thank you. All right, so that portion of the work session is adjourned. Thank you all. Okay, now the board will make a motion to go into closed meeting. One, to discuss and consider the employment and performance of specific public employees pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711a1. And three, to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711a7. Do I have a, a motion? Second? Motion by Ms. Hines, second by Mr. McElveen, we are in closed session.
Go, go.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor? All right, now we're in closed session. We'll be coming back at 2 o'clock, right on schedule.